Good evening, everybody. We'll be getting started as soon as we find our last missing council member.
You haven't hear yet?
I know, the mics aren't working.
You can hit your cell.
We're gonna start as soon as Councilmember Ellen is found and Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. I'm gonna get it right by next week, I promise. Okay, she's here. And with that... Good evening, welcome to the Chandler Public Housing Authority Commission meeting of Monday, May 21st, 2018. Ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Chairman Trip Cheney?
Here.
Commissioner Ellen?
Here.
Commissioner Dearman?
Here.
Commissioner Rowe?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Commissioner Wong?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hartke?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is unscheduled public appearances. Members of the audience may address the commission on any items that are not already on the agenda, and we will have staff follow up with you. So unscheduled public appearances for the Public Housing Authority Commission. Seeing none, there's a couple of consent items. There's the minutes, and then there's a couple of agreements. Commission, what's your pleasure?
Commissioner.
Yes.
Good dream.
Vice Commissioner.
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve the Public Housing Authority consent agenda, the commission's consent agenda for Monday, May 21st, 2018, as submitted.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ellen, a second by Commissioner Hartke. Further discussion from the commission on the consent agenda. And those two items, just for the audience's sake, the minutes, and then the two other items were an agreement with Mills Design Group for Public Housing Kitchen and Bath Cabinet Replacement, and also an agreement with Capstone Roofing for Public Housing Roofing Replacements. With that, would you please poll the commission?
Commissioner Ellen?
Yes.
Commissioner Dearman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartke?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Chairman Trip Cheney?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Vanessa. Meeting adjourned. Good evening, welcome to the Chandler City Council Study Session of Monday, May 21st, 2018. We do have a number of scheduled public appearances this evening, council. I would like to ask Councilmember Wong to join me out front for the scheduled public appearances. We have two employees receiving awards tonight, representing our Police Department and the Public Works and Utilities Department. I'd like to ask City Manager Marsha Reed to begin the presentation. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask Police Chief Sean Duggan to come forward and make his presentation.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. I would like to ask Officer Mike West to come forward in recognition of his 20 years of service with the city of Chandler. Well, Mike began his career with the Police Department in 1998 as a patrol officer and quickly established himself as a focused and highly determined officer. He sharpened his skills and developed a reputation over the years as a very dedicated and talented officer. His hard work paid off when he was selected to become a field training officer a few years later. He then spent the next several years training and developing new officers before he moved to a position as a property crimes detective. And during Mike's 12 years in detectives, he made a significant impact in our community by tenaciously investigating and prosecuting cases. He later returned to patrol, where he currently serves as an FTO. Mike commits himself to serving in the community in a number of different ways. And in addition to his primary assignment in patrol, he also serves as a crisis negotiator for our SWAT team. He's a trained crisis intervention officer, an arson investigator, and acts as an officer in charge when needed. Mike, I just want to thank you for 20 years of service to our city, the leadership, and how you've helped shape the culture of our department over the last two decades. We certainly appreciate it. So congratulations.
At this time, I would ask John Knudsen, our Public Works and Utilities Director, to come forward, and I would ask Josh Wright, Assistant City Manager, to make the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm honored to recognize John Knudsen for 15 years of service to the city of Chandler. John is an East Valley native who joined Team Chandler in 2003 as senior engineer in the Municipal Utilities Department. He was promoted to Utilities Engineering Manager in 2011 and Municipal Utilities Director in 2016. Last year, John was asked to lead the newly-formed Public Works and Utilities Department, where he oversees a team of more than 300 employees in some of our most visible programs, providing Chandler residents with outstanding service 24 hours a day, 365 days per year. As director, John has built an outstanding leadership team and promoted accountability and teamwork while supervising completion of major capital projects, including the expansion of the Ocatillo Water Reclamation Facility, the largest public works project in Chandler's history. John also recently celebrated another anniversary, 30 years of marriage, to his wife Evelyn. They have two sons who are proud Chandler High graduates. Thank you, John, for 15 years of outstanding service. We look forward to many more in the years ahead.
We have two employees who will receive recognition tonight for their retirements, pending retirements. We haven't let them retire yet. Inez Peralt and Nachi Marquez. I'd like City Manager Marsha Reed to begin the presentations.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would ask Ms. Nachi Marquez to come forward, be recognized for her 17 years of service with the city of Chandler. Nachi serves Chandler with passion and enthusiasm as Assistant City Manager. She is Chandler's best cheerleader and makes great contributions as a mentor to city staff and students. She previously led the Communication and Public Affairs Department as the city's first communications director. In that role, Nachi elevated Chandler's status as a very transparent and welcoming community. Two high points in Chandler's history bear the mark of her work and engagement. She led the city's Centennial Celebration in 2012 and was instrumental in earning Chandler its first and only All-American City Status in 2010. Nachi, thank you for your 17 years of service to the city of Chandler and the citizens of this community. And I know your husband Juan is in the audience, and you may have some other family members you would like to introduce, but in case for those that don't know, before coming to Chandler, Nachi also served the cities of Tempe and Phoenix. So a lot of years in public service. We really appreciate it. Thanks, Nachi.
Counsel, I'm gonna give the mic to Nachi in a minute, but if any of you have any comments, it would be appropriate to start, and we'll start on this end if you have something to say, Terry.
Thank you, Mayor. Nachi, I don't know where you get all your energy. And so I'm pretty sure you're not burning the candle at both ends, but you've just been awesome to work with, and we're gonna miss you around here and wish you and your family the best of luck and great times at your place up north. Yeah, so I want to thank you for your service also, and all the help that you've done, as some of us coming in as the new guys. Very helpful, very positive, great attitude, a lot of fun to work with. So thank you for everything you've done for us, not just me and the city, you know, but the city, the staff, all of your efforts. It all came through fruition, and it's been very, it kept the city running great. So thank you very much for all your time, and I look forward, hope you look forward to your next chapter. That's great.
I'm gonna try to say this without tears. I think you're one of the most amazing people we've ever had to work for our city. I knew you before I came on council, but when you came to my office and after I got elected to do a presentation, to help me get to know what's going on in Kappa, I will never forget how enthusiastic you were. And I remember thinking, she likes her job. She loves this city. It was a big aha for me, and my excitement of being on council because of you and the time you took to put the presentation together, your expertise was the best welcoming I could have in starting with the city. So that gave me a great start, and I credit you for that. Really appreciated it. It was like, this is gonna be wonderful. We have an amazing staff. And so you will be greatly missed, and I hope you come around to some different things, like the state of the city next year, right? Okay, just everybody, right? Okay, because we'll want you to be around, and we all really love you a lot, and there's Juan out there, and I think you have some other family members. So thank you for sharing your wife with us all these years. Thank you.
Outside, I watched your career and just how well-respected you are in other cities and other groups, and...
Just a heartfelt thank you to your service to Chandler and what you continue to bring to the community. Thank you.
Nachi, I don't know what I'm gonna do, who's gonna give me gum and sneak me gum over the wall? But, you know, I'll echo what Vice Mayor Ellen said. When I first showed up to the office, and I didn't know where even the bathroom was, you were one of the first smiles that walked around the corner to help me kind of get on board. And that smile and that energy is infectious, and I'll never forget when you hear the heels coming down the hallway. You know something's going down, right? And so you're always moving with grace and with energy, and it's infectious, and I am grateful that I got to meet you and know you and work with you. All the best.
Very difficult to see you go, and I miss your smile, and also miss you, looks like you were longing for something. So I just want to say thank you. Same, just like Mark, the same, who we just come here. I think I remember the first smiling was from you. So thank you very much. And not allowed to say, Marsha also gave me a smile too. Okay, so, yeah. So thank you very much, and I wish you very well. I can't feel you are too young to retire, but...
Okay, well, Nachi. Well, Nachi's been with the city since 99 or 2000? 2000. We sought Nachi out. I was mayor back then, it was before my first stint at the legislature, and Chandler's image, you wouldn't think it today because we have such a great image, but our image had kind of been hurt because of a couple of things, and we needed really to kind of revamp our whole image and that department that kind of worked on our image. And so we decided to make some change. Unlike a lot of recruitments, we knew who we wanted. We wanted that person that was in Tempe that had run the Super Bowl, the first Super Bowl, and I think 96, 1996, and run it without a flaw, and that was her, among the many other things. I mean, she has a lot of credits to her record. She was in Chandler, obviously, in Tempe, in Phoenix, and in the news industry. She was a reporter, she was one of those people on the TV. But anyway, we had made a decision, that's who we wanted to get, and so we pursued, and I know you'll have a story probably about Pat McDermott or somebody, whoever went over there and sat in your living room and begged you to come to the city of Chandler, and Juan let her come, and so we are glad you came to Chandler. It's been really good. You've got that energy and just a positive, totally positive person. I just wondered, do you ever kick Juan? Because you're always so positive around here, you know, because just never any negative energy. It's all positive coming. And that's funny about what Mark said, because when we hear those heels clicking coming down the hall, we knew that there's lightning in the room. So anyway, I've enjoyed personally working with you. We went through a lot of things together. I think it's been really, really good. I've really liked working with you. I consider you a dear friend, too. And so we're gonna miss you, but we're happy for you, too, because you've earned your retirement. As I've been telling, a lot of these folks that are retiring, as before I go out as mayor, you know, they've earned their retirement. So God bless you and your family, and I'm gonna turn this mic over to you.
You sure you want to do that? No, just kidding. Thank you all very much, Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate your comments. It has been an awesome 18 years here at the city of Chandler. I've been blessed to get to work with not only just outstanding elected leadership, city management, and really our employees, and many of them are out in the audience. We have got probably the best employees of anywhere, second to none, I would have to say, and that's, oh gosh, if Tempe and Phoenix are listening right now, I'm in trouble. But we do have some wonderful, wonderful employees, and it has been, again, a privilege, a pleasure to serve the city, to serve this community. What a blessing it was for me to get to join just a top-notch organization with wonderful, wonderful employees. So my thanks back to the organization for just all the great things. Again, what I, if people had said, what are you gonna miss? I said, the people, not the projects, the past, the people, because we have wonderful people. And so again, my thanks back to everyone. I did want to recognize my husband of almost 34 years, Dr. Juan Marquez, I always bow to him. Wonderful individual. I could not have done and been through a successful 30-plus-year career without his support. My younger sister Josie, Chandler resident, is here with us as well, and I want to do a shout-out. I've got my two boys, Derek, who lives in Portland, Oregon. Hopefully, they're tuning in on the live stream, and my younger son Taylor, who's in Durango, Colorado. So a shout-out to them. Hopefully, again, they're able to tune in, and again, it's just been a wonderful privilege to serve this community and just local government in general. What a wonderful career it's been. So my thanks, Mayor, and Councilmember Wong, and the rest of the council appreciate you all very much, and our city employees, and Inez, who's going to celebrate 30 years. I know you're next, but congratulations to you. Thank you all very much.
Juan, you've been summoned, and Josie's been summoned. You know, there's that rivalry between U of A and ASU, Tucson and the Valley. Nachi kind of bridged that. She grew up in Tucson, but she came to ASU and went on, was on the diving team at ASU. So thanks for being a sun devil. Sorry, Josh. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask Brenda Brown, our Community Services Director, to come forward and make the final presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. That's a hard act to follow. It is with my honor that I would like to invite Inez Peralt to come forward and join you. On behalf of the Library and Community Services Staff, I'd like to congratulate Inez Peralt on her next phase in her life, her retirement. Inez has been an inspiration for all of the library staff by her acts of kindness and positive spirit for 30 years. Inez has set the standard for developing relationships with customers and has become the epitome for library customer service. Inez has long been admired for her graciousness, her ability to maintain her composure in any situation, and her camaraderie with her colleagues and customers alike. Inez is caring and honest and truly loved and respected by all of her coworkers. In her role as library aide, Inez has witnessed the library expand from one location to four, assisted in moving the entire downtown library to its current location twice, if I remember correctly. For many years, she was a local favorite at the downtown library, and in 2012, Inez relocated to the Hamilton Library. She has long mastered her duties of issuing library cards, remember when we used to kind of stamp them? Pulling holds for customers, checking their materials, and helping customers find what they need. Inez has excelled as a volunteer supervisor at Hamilton and has had a tremendous impact. Her volunteers are dedicated and loyal to continuing their service at Hamilton due to her personal touch. It will be hard to imagine Hamilton Library without her, and to say that you will be missed, Inez, is an understatement. We wish you the best in your future endeavors and spending time with your family and friends. I know her son and his family are here tonight. Here's to a long-awaited, happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you for 30 wonderful years. We appreciate everything you've done for the city, and you've been a fixture, and we greatly appreciate that. If I could get your son and his kids to stand, I know you didn't want to talk, but I'll ask them to stand and be recognized. C.C. Puente Sci-Fi Girls. I'd like to ask C.C. Puente CEO Alberto Asparza and the Sci-Fi Girls team to come forward. I know he's also got some folks that helped with that, coming forward with him. This group is receiving a lot of notice lately for their work on the STEM sciences. Alberto, thank you. Yes, we'll get him, we'll get him. I'm gonna say a few words, then we'll hand the mic over. These are the Sci-Fi Girls, right? Sci-Girls, okay, not sci-fi, okay. Got me worried there for a minute. Okay, these are the Sci-Girls. We're gonna let Bill talk in a minute. We do have something here for the, we'll give those to Bill, and he can hand them out to the girls later. Okay, this group is receiving a lot of notice lately for their work in the STEM sciences. They recently won the prestigious FRC Inspiration in Engineering Award, and also were highlighted on a national PBS series. I will have Alfredo make some remarks in a bit, but we'll go to Bill right now. And with that, Bill Crawford.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. My name is Dr. William Crawford, and I serve as the Chair of the C.C. Puente Foundation Board of Directors, and it is our privilege this evening to share information with you about our degrees of freedom. And to share very specific details with you is our senior mentor, Mr. Bill Badger.
Thank you. I've had the pleasure of working with these girls. There's a total of 22 of them. Fortunately, they all... Fortunately, they all couldn't be here tonight. But, Cise Puede, who sponsors the degrees of freedom, has about 100 students that are in the East Valley here, where they learn everything from the small robotics, which we do in the elementary school, through the mid robotics, where we do the underwater robotics, to the large robotics, where these girls were basically started out building a robot that went up to NAU and then down to GCU and competed. For a total of over 800 teams, I believe, were in the entire group and actually won that inspiration award and got themselves to Houston, where they were competing internationally. And in their division, there were 68 of their groups in their division and we ended up 43rd in that division, which was phenomenal for them. So, I want to thank you girls very much, by the way, for, you know, showing us mentors that are here, like Bill Moses over here, who actually taught some of the girls how to do welding on aluminum. You know, Mr. Asparza, who of course, you know, sponsored the whole team. Of course, I have our chief photographer over here and our other chief mentor as well, Mr. Cameron. Yeah. But, as I said, this is an all-girls team and it's a big feat. Because out of all of those teams, by the way, that went to Houston, there were only four all-girls teams that went there.
Briefly, these girls have been outstanding. The majority of the girls have been with us since grade four. And next year, we're probably going to have about 180 girls. And so, we're just excited because it's girl power, right, girls? Girls have done a great job for us. And next year, we've expanded to Phoenix, to Mesa, and we're continuing to expand. So, I'm very happy to be with these girls. And it's just been an exciting year for Chandler, the Chandler Unified School District, which is the best school district in the state of Arizona. Dr. Castillo has been wonderful. Without her support, we are a nonprofit in search of Dr. Castillo. So, on behalf of the team, the organization, the Board of Directors, it's great to be here. And sir, we'd like to thank you for everything. You've been helpful throughout the years. Nachi Marcus, I'm going to miss you dearly. You've been outstanding for us. You've always been in our corner. And I have nobody else to argue with for the next few years. But anyway, it's been a pleasure working with you as well. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
We've been a team for over two years now and we're grateful to say that over the two years that we've been competing in robotics, we've also completed over 5,000 hours of community service, which includes FLO Robotics Team, which is kids five years old and older. We've also been grateful to work with Make-A-Wish, who we were Ronoff's Wish when he came to us a year ago. And most impactfully, it was this year when we did Sci-Girls and we got to be the first Sci-Girls here in Arizona. And it was premiered internationally, which was incredible to not only speak in Spanish, but inspire other girls to do robotics and to do STEM and continue on the path to become an engineer or a doctor.
Let's do a photo. Okay. We have a lot of smart kids with us today. The next recognition is Seton Catholic High School Academic Decathlon Team. Like to call up Seton Principal Victor Serna, Moderator Todd Decker, and the Seton High Academic Decathlon Team. Come on up. Okay, got all kinds of smart kids up, coming up here tonight. Seton placed seventh overall. Seton won its second consecutive 3A Division State Title at the recent 34th Arizona Academic Decathlon State Competition. They placed seventh overall and was the highest-scoring non-public school in the competition. I'd like to ask Victor to introduce the team and talk a little bit more about the competition. Victor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, members of the city staff. Thank you for this recognition. We're very proud of our decathletes. It's quite the sacrifice that they, of time that they put into the preparation to be ready for this competition. And it's one of those things that is often not recognized enough, in my opinion. But, we're very proud of all their hard work. We're proud of the work of Mr. Decker, their coach. And I'd like to give him an opportunity to explain a little bit more about the competition and introduce some of the members of the team who were able to join us this evening.
I guess it's more appropriate for me to talk this way. I'm not used to doing this with people behind me. For a lot of people who don't know about academic decathlon, if you think of an Olympic decathlon, where athletes are competing in 10 different athletic events and they have to compete in every single event, this is structured that way, where the students compete in 10 different academic events. Seven objective events that are tested and three subjective events that are judged. So, every year, academic decathlon has a different main theme. And this past year's main theme was Africa. So, the students study all year long, starting in August, and have several competitions throughout the year, where they've learned art, music, history, science, economics, math, and everything is related to Africa. So, we learned about the art of Africa and the literature of Africa and the history of Africa and everything ties together. And then, they have to take tests in all these different subject areas. And what really, really makes decathlon unique is that it's not just the upper echelon students in every school that compete at this. They have to have students in different GPA categories. So, we have the honors students who represent the 3.75 to 4.0 GPA students. We have the scholastic students that are represented by the 3.0 to 3.74. And we have to have students with under a 3.0 GPA. So, it's not just the top scholars of the school. And it affords people that have historically been underrepresented in academic competitions the chance to prove themselves that they really can achieve at high levels. And all the students in the state that have teams, they compete at various different scrimmages and tournaments during the course of the school year. And then, finally, we have a regional competition. There are four regions in the state of Arizona. And the regional competition's in February. And we have the toughest region, the East Valley region, which has all the Mesa schools, all the Chandler schools. Very, very difficult. And our team came in fourth in the region out of all those schools. And we qualified for the state tournament where we finished in the top 10. We were number seven in the state. We broke 40,000 points, which we'd never done before. And we qualified to be the Arizona medium school representative at the national tournament that was held in Frisco, Texas in April. And we came in fifth overall in the nation and many of our students won medals. We have, starting on this end, we have Silas Gad, who was our sacrificial lamb, competing in the honors category because we needed another over 3.0, a 3.75 student. Very, very difficult category. He's also our one junior that's coming back for next year. We have Patrick Gorman, who won a bronze medal in economics. No, mathematics, it was economics, sorry. Bronze medal in mathematics at the national level. Eric Chinchilla, who won a bronze medal in economics at the national level. Robert Busing, who was our top scorer overall, was competing in the very, very difficult honors category with all the honors GPA people. And he won, Robert, what? Silver in literature and bronze in economics. And Dylan Shipley, who was our overall number-one scoring scholastic in the nation for the medium-sized schools, outscoring all the other scholastic students at the competition. And he won numerous gold medals and silver medals, which I have forgotten all of them. Can you remind us? He's very humble. But, anyway, they all did very, very well and I'm very proud of working with these kids. They are the best kids that I've been able to work with in quite some time. And I'm just, I think I have the details. I've got to mention this. Dylan Shipley won a gold medal in literature, a gold medal in music, a gold medal in mathematics, a gold medal in economics, a silver medal in science. And the gold medal is the overall eight-event highest-scoring scholastic student. We did not get to compete in the decathlon in person. We competed virtually. So, we did not compete in speech and interview during the national competition. So, that's why we did an eight-event decathlon, which is sort of oxymoron, but there you go. Thank you.
How many did you have on the team? That was the only... Thank you. We'll take a photo and give them all our respects.
Counsel, next item is a review of the items on the agenda. We had one item called in today for discussion. It is item number 11. And I will go to Councilmember Hartkey. Councilmember Hartkey.
Thank you, mayor. So, I just wanted to talk briefly. Item number 11 is an action that I requested our city manager look into. And so, we've been working on this for about two months. And it, in essence, puts council under the same scrutiny or same examination as the rest of our employees concerning bullying or any sense of exploitation of other employees. And it's not going to come from any place other than us as council members. And I think it's important that whatever we expect out of our employees in terms of how they are treated and how they treat others, that we ought to be leaders in the same. So, my what on this is it makes council members and council appointments accountable to the standards that our employees are in terms of treatment, bullying, sexual harassment, and everything else. And why now? And the main reason is because it's not an issue now. I always think it's better to address things before you have reasons to do so when you're talking about raising the bar and expectations. We have had in our state and beyond our state this year, a legislator at the state level, a council member in a neighboring city, and I can think of a mayor in a major city back east that all had issues that resulted in discipline. And it's my, it's my wish and desire that we just embrace the fact that we know we are in the public eye, but that we lead the organization in terms of being treated the same. So, we set the example and it's our way of, it's my way, a small way of just continuing to demonstrate, hopefully, the confidence that our community has in us and it's us on city council taking the lead. So, that's my motivation for doing this.
Thank you, council member. Okay, we're voting on that on Thursday. Counsel, there is one annexation on Thursday. So, we will be doing that also. So, with that, unless there was any other items council wanted to review, we will adjourn the study session.